Seems early, but before you know it, you'll be firing up that heater. Is your system ready for winter? Let Premier Heating and Air check it out. For just $69, our trained professionals will come out and inspect your heater and duct system to ensure it's ready for that first cold morning. Call Premier for up to $1,500 in rebates on your new heating system. Also qualify for a $2,000 tax credit on new units installed in 2023. Call today to experience the Premier difference.
The special call meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called to order at 4:30, which is the posted time for the beginning of this public hearing. I'd ask for our city manager, Josh Powell, to provide the invocation. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of the flag. Mr. Powell?
Put your hands. Dear Lord, we thank you for our city. We thank you for our elected officials and our city staff and our community. We thank you for the opportunity to serve you, Lord. We ask that in everything that we do, all the decisions that we make, that we keep you first on our minds, and we pray your blessing ever for the city of Dublin and our community. And just like my prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming to this call meeting of the Dublin City Council. The purpose of the meeting is to receive public comments regarding the Oconee Gym renovation proposal. That is the item that is on our agenda for this afternoon. We're going to handle this in the way that we handle citizens' comments at a regular city council meeting. That is that each person will have up to three minutes to speak related to the proposal. Your comments need to be related to this particular issue because that is the agenda item that we have in front of us. Our clerk, is our clerk?
He's, he's.
All right. Our city, okay, our city treasurer, Mr. Blake Daniels, will be acting as clerk for today's meeting. He has a timer. As you know, it's three minutes for comments. He will give you a signal whenever you have got one minute to go, and then when your three minutes are up, he'll ask you to end your comments. You need to wrap those comments up very quickly at the end of the three minutes. So this is your opportunity to talk to council, and if there are particular questions, then, you know, we will take those questions down. If we have an opportunity to answer those, we will. I know that some of you have submitted previous questions by email, which have been answered by city manager, but we want to make sure that this process is as open and transparent as possible and that there is a full and fair opportunity for everyone in the community to provide input. So at this time, we will open this matter for public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Ms. Chain, please come forward.
I'm Brenda Chain. I live at 656 Quinton Road. I am a county commissioner, District One. My district is inside, my district inside the city limits includes Benny Jones and Chris Smith, Chris Smith Ward. And we talk often about whatever is going on in those wars, and this particular gym is in my district. That's why I am so interested. But I was told by one of the, one, another one of the councilmen, I won't call her the name, that Chris and Benny and I was in cahoots together. And it was supposed to be an assault, but it wasn't because being in cahoots with Benny and Chris is good for the city because that means that we are partnered together to do what we need to do in those districts. And it do show what we are doing because if you ever go down to Wasco Bar Park, you can see what we have accomplished down there with the city and the council working. First of all, I want to say, I think it is really, it's lack of respect for this meeting to be called when the councilman that's over that ward that's in question could not be here. I think, I think that's, that's total respect. He is the elected official for ward, for the ward in which we are questioned. And our research is, no, it wasn't any reason why, the reason for it to be called without him being able to be here because we're not in jeopardy of losing this grant because, because we needed to get a construction contract right now. That, that grant don't, don't end to 2026. But when I ran for, when I ran for, for county commission, I said I would be a voice for this, that community. So let's, let's get to the issue. This, I have been in plenty meetings with the community in the past couple of, couple of weeks. But this is what the community tell me they want. The, the, the community wants all bids rejected at this point. The community want total transparency. The people want to know exactly what that $3.2 million is going to do for that gym. The people want a real design to go to a contractor and get a real contract. But let me tell you something. Before, even before Tara wrote this, this grant, I had already gotten in touch with Benny, the Recreation Department, and Curtis Smith for the county to redo all bathrooms down there. But then Tara called me and she asked, what can the county do? She told me about this wonderful grant that she had a possibility of getting. She asked, what could the county do to help them seal that bid? And I happily said, I will talk to them, and they chose to do it. One more thing, please.
All right. You can wrap it up, please.
Okay. But also, like I said, the community want transparency, but also the county need transparency too. We are willing and have the money ready for this $500,000 to give you guys, but we also want to know what we are getting for our money so that we can get more bang for our buck.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chain. It's now open for other people to make comments. Yes, sir. Come forward. Yes, you.
My name is George Hollinsworth. I'm a native of Dublin, Georgia, and alumni class of 1968 of Oconee. The reason that there is so much controversy, there hasn't been any architect design of what is being done for the facility to say you doing a remodeling. Only thing that's there is a shell. We call it a shell in the construction business because I understand that there was some money allocated to Graham to have a contractor and an architect to draw some architectural plans that would be done at the Oconee Gym. But I was wondering, did the city council get any architect designs issued to them so they could review this? So if you don't have any architect or design, you telling us that you going to have a bond and we going to get $3.2 million for a bond with nothing in it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollinsworth, for this comment.
Hi, I'm Dr. Dustin Gay. I'm a local orthopedic surgeon with Houston Clinic Orthopedics, and we'd really like to invite everybody to come out to our new office facility to take a look at it. It's a larger space with physical therapy, and we're just excited to have it, and we'd love for people to come out and visit us.
Come by and see us today at our brand-new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
Get yourself a natural gas tank with a water heater and save space.
And have endless hot water.
Natural gas is more efficient than electricity.
And it's lighter than air.
When you install natural gas appliances.
You can get rebates up to $1,500.
The city of Dublin will finance you up to $7,500.
For sixty months at 0% interest.
Use natural gas for all your outdoor cooking.
It's a luxury.
We're on call 24/7.
You'll call us, and we'll be there.
Whether you're building a home or starting a business, City of Dublin Natural Gas has you covered.
We serve commercial and residential gas all across town.
Yeah. Call your gas guys.
At 478-277-5048.
School's back in, and we all know what that means. Whether it's football or softball or any other ball sport, Dublin Chevy GMC is here for you. Ball is in the air here in Middle Georgia, but the deals are still smoking hot at Dublin Chevy GMC.
Let's go.
There you go.
The scouts say we can't catch, throw, or run well, but they all agree, we sure do sell cars well at Dublin Chevy GMC.
You've dreamed about the perfect house, a place to call your own, and a place to not only stretch out, but to grow. Auto owners protect your house because to you, it's home. That simple human sense.
Ask Currie Maffet Insurance in Dublin if auto owners make sense for you.
Happy to help, man. I was just hoping to talk to myself anyway.
If anyone else would like to make a comment? Yes, please.
I am Barbara J. Martin. I'm a business owner, and I respect Mayor Kype and all of you all because I think you do an excellent job. And my same question is, why would we have a meeting? Okay, my staff, I'm a business owner. My staff may have a meeting, but I believe they would respect me enough that they would not have an important meeting like this without the person that represent, we elected that person for that ward. We should also respect that person and not call a meeting unless that person is present. We are all here for the same purpose supposedly, for the betterment of our community. That's our community. We love our community. People on this, I'm on the planning and zoning, people have called me with comments, and I've stood with them, and we have been here to make decisions. And to call a meeting without Benny Jones here and he's over Ward One, I think that's very disrespectful, and I think we need to reconsider whatever we are trying to do without including the person. Every one of you all want to be represented because you were put in office for a ward. And if you were not here and they called a meeting, I believe you would want to be present at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And just as a point of information, we had agreed, and the motion that Mr. Jones made was to hold a meeting this week. That meeting needed to be held on a Wednesday or Thursday just because of public notice and timing and availability of council members. We polled council members to try to find a time that was agreeable to everybody. Six out of seven council members were available for this time. Mr. Jones did, as far as I'm aware, has not provided. We asked him, and when he said he could not participate at this time, we attempted a different time that was also not available. We asked if he could participate by telephone. He said he was not available to participate by telephone, and we made sure that this meeting was to receive public comment only so that no action would be taken at this meeting. No action will be taken until our regular council meeting, which is next week, which Mr. Jones will be available for. The comments that are made at this meeting will be available to him so that he can receive those comments the way that other council members have received the comment. So the fact that this is a public hearing to receive public comments means that in no way is his vote being disrespected. That vote will occur at a meeting which is regularly scheduled next Thursday. And I think that there is another issue that probably needs to be addressed, which is the design issue. You know, I, I've heard a couple of comments, which is that there is no design for the building. The grant that was written was for the renovation of the building. There were plans that were, concept, concept plans that were put in front of the community at the Oconee Gym public meeting that was held in June. There was an opportunity for everyone in that community, everybody in the public, to come and comment on the proposed plans. I think I remember seeing many of you at that meeting. Were you, who was at the meeting? If you don't mind, yeah, if you remember at the meeting, there were plans that were posted there. At that, at that meeting, we also discussed how this was going to be on a contract manager basis, and the reason for that was to allow the project to happen more quickly and more cost-effectively. If you hire a full architect to do the plans, then that is generally going to be in a project like this, 7% to 10% of the project cost, which is, in this situation, somewhere in the $200,000 to $250,000 range. The, the guidance of staff was that we didn't need to spend that much money on an architect when almost all the work was remodeling work. Now, if we were building a new building, of course, you need an architectural bid package. But when you are remodeling an existing building, to spend that amount of money on an architect did not seem to be the best way to deliver the, the most amount of amenities on that project. And all of this was discussed at that June public meeting. So I just wanted to clear up those, those points. If there's anyone else who would like to make a public comment, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Kay, Councilman. My name is Logan Zekes. Address 127 North Square Road. First, I want to let you know I spent 25 years in the United States Army, and I started in the same chair you sat in, and I have senior leadership on the left and right there. And my job was based on integrity, doing what's right, and training my personnel what is right, where I couldn't be persuaded either to the left or to the right there. And this, this gym issue is about doing what's right, you know? And I want to know why the Black citizen brings out their concern they have been pushed, pushed from, from the council back. I sat there Thursday night, and I watched and I observed, I looked around there, and what I seen there, you know, and I had a feeling that something that wasn't right, you know? I, I watched, I'm a good servant. I've been a senior leader, I'm over a thousand soldiers, you know? I've been there. My job was to take them to war and bring them back home to their loved ones. And also, and I, and I checked things out, and then when we had brought comments, it were pushed back on them. So we wanted to, we want things to not be biased, but be straight to the point and be equal, equal for the left and to the right. And second, why are we rushing, we will not lose this grant, which came down from higher. We won't lose this grant. We just have to do what's right, you know? And the cities that have funds that aren't used for the Senator Olson offer, we have until 2026 to spend this money, two years from here while we rushing. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And I think there is a timeline issue that probably also needs clarifying. The 2026 deadline is the deadline for the ARPA funds, which is $500,000. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Bradshaw.
That's the deadline for the ARPA and the grant funding. Because there's been so many delays with equipment deliveries and getting subcontractors on jobs, we're seeing that all over the country, all over the world, we did not want to continue to postpone at risk. We don't want to get anywhere near that deadline because we will not get reimbursed for costs if it goes past that October 30th, 2026 deadline. So we wanted to get the project at least started so that if we did run into any equipment delays, HVAC systems right now for the size that's going to be required for Oconee Gym is almost, is a minimum of 20 weeks out right now for just that type of equipment to get, to get to the U.S. shores. So that's, that's what we're facing. It's just a lot of unknown timeliness and why we wanted to get this project off the ground.
Okay. Thank you for that additional information. If there's anyone else who would like to make a public comment, now is an opportunity for public comment. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
I'm George Russell. I want to begin by, by telling mayor and council, mayor and Dublin City Council, city staff, I commend you on your vision. I commend you on your accomplishments. I think you're doing a good job. And, and I know what the job's like. It's tough. And you can't please everybody. I want to ask a few questions. Number one, have we awarded a contract?
No contract has been awarded.
No contract has been awarded. I know we have a, we have a contractor here that is an award-winning contractor in restoration. And he's submitted, and it was my understanding that you had awarded.
The agenda item at the last meeting was for awarded the contract to the, to Garbage Construction, which was staff recommendation, and that was, that was postponed to the next Thursday meeting so that a public hearing could be held this week.
Okay. What, what I want, what I want everybody to understand is that this contractor is an award-winning contractor. They've done government buildings all over the state and received awards, and they're in Dublin, Georgia. And that's really what I want to say. I want to make sure everybody understands those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Hi, I'm Perry Williamson, and we've been baking here at Williamson's Bakery since 1927. In 1965, my grandfather, Merle Williamson, hung our name on this bakery. Ever since then, people have been stopping in for the Williamson's tradition. We invite you to do the same here at 1634 Veterans Boulevard, or catch us on Facebook, or just come get you some.
I don't just value my customers, I value the community, and, and we actually take our customer service here to the next level. And it's because I am nostalgic of this town, and we got a little saying, this is not just a storage facility, it's a personalized storage experience. So we encourage everybody to come on down and take a tour and just see exactly what we're talking about. We have a 50,000 square foot facility, so we can accommodate any size move, and we're in the Rosa Shopping Center at 102 Hillcrest Parkway, and we are an indoor climate-controlled storage facility. We have five convenient entry points that include a lean-to canopy that you can get out of the weather if it's raining. No worries, we got you covered. And on the backside of this facility, we have a loading dock with a loading dock bay where any box truck or 18-wheeler can pull up to for the bigger moves. We've got storage sizes all the way down from nine-by-sixes all the way up to 10-by-30s, so we can accommodate any size move from clearing out a closet all the way up to a big house or office space that you need to move in. So we got you covered. We've got 24/7 security protection and fire alarm protection. We have cameras in and outside of this building, so you're definitely taken care of. We've got rodent control and pest control covered too. We're not going to just take care of belongings, we're going to take care of you too.
It's hunting season at Roach Farm and Garden. Roach Farm and Garden has a warehouse full of feed and seed, Pennington, Big Boss, ADM, 4S, FRM, and Antler Extreme, even got the feeders to put it in. Food plots, we got you covered. Fertilizer, oats, clover, peas, and mixes. Take time to check out our huge concrete statue selection. Need deer lure? Fresh voodoo always on the counter. We've got something for everybody at Roach Farm and Garden. Two locations, Dublin and Wrightsville.
From humble beginnings with a desire to serve the Dudley community, Bank of Dudley has grown to five locations, serving Lawrence, Twigs, and surrounding counties. Serving our community since 1905, the Bank of Dudley is looking forward to its second century of community banking. Drop in today to any of our five locations, Jeffersonville, Dudley, East Dublin, Veterans Boulevard, and downtown Dublin. Bank of Dudley, member FDIC, and an equal housing lender.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? This is an opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, now is the time. Thank you.
How you doing, City Council? Mayor? My name is Christopher Johnson. I'm here with Oconee Consolidated Voice. And what's, what's being proposed here from the citizens, if, if we are, we're imploring you to listen, is that they're expressing some concern, some transparency, accountability is what they're asking for. There have been too many, there have been several other incidents, what, from the public's perspective, were inefficient. And for this particular project, because of where it's happening in Oconee, which is a very passionate part of this city, Oconee Trojans. And so the citizens in that community are asking for you to be transparent and accountable for what's going to happen to that holy ground in this community. They want to know, we don't know the extent or the scope of work that's going to happen in that gym. They don't know whether or not contractors and people that want to be a part of that project are going to get fair consideration. So it needs to be addressed. So if we need to step back, if there's leeway, right, to roll it back for the accountability, let's do so to address the concerns of the citizens. I think that's what's been asked.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. If you can give me one second before we have the next comment. And just for the public's awareness, Councilman Tess Godfrey is participating in this meeting by telephone. She is on the line, and she is listening to comments as they come in. So I just wanted everybody to know that, even though she's not present, she is here by telephone.
Mayor, hello?
Yes.
Did you ask the people to speak clearly into the microphone? I couldn't really hear Mr. Johnson at the end.
All right. I'll make sure that that happens.
I'll call you, Tess.
He said that he would call you. Just a moment. All right. So I want to read the scope of work that was provided in the, what's that? In the request for proposals that was provided to contractors. Now, this is a, there's a lot of things to the scope of work, but I just want to make sure everybody is aware of what was, what was listed here. The scope of this project includes removal of the pitched roof and re-establishing a historic barrel roof, replacing and upgrading all major mechanical systems, including electrical, plumbing, heating, and air and fire protection. Demolition and removal of the CMU window infill, which I think many of you have seen how dark that gym gets because the windows were filled up with CMU. So it's removing of that window infill, demolition and removal of ceilings, doors, florings, and fixtures, reconstituting and replacing all exterior windows for the entire facility, performing environmental abatement as needed, and that would be the asbestos that is in the building. Renovating existing corridors, classrooms, restrooms, weight training rooms, stage, storage area, lobby and office, offices with new paint, new flooring, new ceiling, new light fixtures, new doors, and specialty fixtures. Reconfiguring and refinishing the gymnasium floor. Now, that is one area that was not specifically indicated because we wanted to get additional community input about whether there would be one court or multiple courts at that area. So that was one zone where we wanted to get additional community input. Rehabilitating the existing historic bleacher seating, establishing a pronounced exterior facade with a welcoming entry, storefront glass doors, windows, and code-compliant points of egress. Adding exterior masonry material to CMU located on the front elevation. This is to provide a cohesive exterior finish to the building. Constructing sidewalks around the side of the gym to connect the points of egress and to parking. Design and install art throughout the facility, paying homage to Oconee High School and its alumni and staff, ensuring its story lives on. The actual design of the art and the installation of the art was also going to be based on community input, and that was another item that was open for community. So I just wanted everyone to, I wanted the record to be clear that the project scope was identified in the request for proposals that went out, that was published in the paper, went out to the state registry, was provided to contractors, that the six companies that attended the pre-bid meeting were all aware of. And this is the same scope of work that was presented to the public at the meeting in June at the Oconee Gym. This, this is the scope of work that was part of the grant proposal that was provided to the state. This information is public information and has been available for, I guess, at least three to four months now. So, all right. That's just to make sure that.
Mayor, can I ask a question about the, from Tara about?
Yes.
Okay. So my understanding, Tara, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this was a historic renovation project? Is that, is that correct, or renovation project?
This is a full renovation project. The, the scope of work does not include changing any structural features, but just a complete overhaul. The way I explained it to the contractors at the pre-bid meeting was that, and, and the public input, this will be a new building inside the historic shell of our Oconee Gym, meaning that we are replacing everything, air conditioners, all MEP, everything, all plumbing, all restaurants, everything in there will have a hand laid on it and be new and made new with this, with this project.
And was the grant proposal that, that allowed us to receive the two? And was the grant proposal that, that allowed us to receive the $2 million, was that based on it being a historic renovation?
Yes, the title of the proposal submitted for this grant is the Okoni Gym Renovation Project.
Okay.
And we have a project description available that I can provide as well, and be glad to answer any questions about it.
Okay, so in that proposal, was there ever the mention of an additional building or buildings to, to the site along with this specific grant?
With this specific grant, no. What we decided to do, and we discussed with council at large before we applied for it, I don't know if you remember, a pre-council, probably last September or October, we talked about the opportunity to leverage our local money with this grant and be able to renovate the gym. The goal of that would be to maximize the space. Right now, the gym is, I'd say, 40% or less usable space. We have asbestos that is exposed and disrupted, which you can imagine what an environmental nightmare that is. And we have those areas closed off. All of the points of egress are not safe. We have padlocks on points of egress. You know, the gym itself needs an overhaul. So what we wanted to do is maximize the gym space itself, get all 16,000 square feet online, and then look at if there's expansion opportunities in the future. And that's sort of what we just talked about, that let's go ahead and leverage our local money we have now, renovate the Okoni Gym, maximize the use of it, program it to the yield, get it back online for the community, and then look into the future, five, 10 years down the road when we've got that maximized. That was the whole goal.
Let me, let me ask something from the scope of work you just said. I mean, you're talking about painting, going room by room, we're doing painting, taking down doors, replacing doors and windows. That's what I'm hearing from the community, that's, that's a design, it's something you're going in, you're twisting, you're changing things around. We pretty much, from the scope of work you just said, we're going into every room, just painting and putting in doors and putting in window panels and that's, I don't think that's what the community wants.
Yeah, well, the, the scope of work is that the mechanical engineering, plumbing, all gets to be new. The windows are all new, and a new entryway is placed on the front of it. And within the rooms that are around the edges, you get new floors, new ceilings, asbestos abatement, and then finished off with paint and art.
Right, that's, that's going on the current, the current look and how it looks now.
Well, it would have the same, the building itself is the same.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, you would go into, if they do a renovation, you would go into the gym, it'll look just like it does now, it's just new paint, you got a new floor and new paint. We're not, we're not, yes, we're going by the scope of work you said. He said, you're painting, you're putting in doors, right, you're putting in windows. It's gonna, it's, it's gonna be the same. When they're talking about design, we're talking about, I might go into Okoni Gym, I might make it right, and that might be the way room. I might go to the back, and the back is a media room. It's things like that when they say architectural design, they're not talking about just going in and painting.
Can I respond?
Yes.
So that is some of the exact input we were looking for in the gym session. We actually didn't get any, but we planned on coming back and getting more. That is some exact input we're looking for is, we want to know, how does the community see this building being programmed in the future so that we can configure and design those rooms based on that need? Some of the input we have gotten from the staff there is, the weight room is wildly important, it needs updating, we want to replace all that equipment, we want to open it up so that you can put more light in there. So that's been some good. We've had game room, media room, like you said, having the gaming consoles. That sort of stuff comes as we get into this project, right? So the way this construction management deal with work is you get the contractor there, we start working through that design process. We want this room to look like this, this is how you need to outfit it so that it's prepared for when we get furniture, fixtures, and equipment in there. So that was sort of the next phase of this, once we get the C-MAR in place.
And the, and my understanding is that you have the, this allows the contractor to begin working on the structural, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing issues that have these long time periods where you have to order the stuff. And, and that way you can get the project done more quickly if you can begin with those major systems.
As we design out.
A lot of those mechanics you're talking about, we're talking about, that's probably 1.5 million of the project on it. Accounting, you're talking about electricity and electrical. I mean, you got Mr. Curtis in the back. I don't, I don't think it's a problem. Electrical hasn't been a problem, I'm 32 years since I've been there.
Electrical is a problem, there's not enough of a load there to carry any higher future use, and it's not been upgraded based on the assessment that we did last year.
No, I mean, for me, this, for me here, from the Rick Department and Mr. Curtis, I mean, we put too much money in there. For me here, from Rick Department, Brian and Ken, but, I mean, yeah.
Okay, well, and that, and this, this is primarily a citizen input, and I do want to make sure that questions of the citizens are answered and questions of staff are answered in a public and transparent way.
Progressive Rule Telephone Co-op offers a full range of communication products and services to its members in Lawrence County and surrounding areas. We take pride in being your total communications provider, and we work hard to provide quality services at the best prices. In addition to offering phone service, we provide high-speed internet and digital high-def TV. And we always strive to put our members first. Progressive Rule, your total communications company. Small enough to know you, large enough to serve you. Progressivetele.com. Call 478-984-4201. Or stop by 890 Simpson Avenue in Ritz. Progressive Rule Telephone Co-op.
Come see why more and more people are shopping the friendliest grocery store in town.
I shop at Pickle Wiggles.
Shopping for the freshest produce around.
I shop at Pickle Wiggles.
Shopping for certified Angus beef.
I shop at Pickle Wiggles.
We bag and carry your groceries to your car.
I'm Michael Willis, and we come to work every day to serve you.
And I'm Mike Willis, and we'd like to thank you for shopping at Pickle Wiggles.
Looking for a career that's always in demand? How about one that provides you with practical and useful skills? A career that allows you to earn hands-on experience and an education with little to no debt? Okoni Fall Line Technical College prepares students with the right set of skills to succeed in fast-growing careers in healthcare, manufacturing, business, and technology fields. If you're ready to gain the experience you need to start your career locally, OFTC is where it all begins. Okoni Fall Line Technical College, careers begin here.
I'm Brian Baysmore, President and CEO of Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County. We would like to invite you to come by and experience a welcoming banking environment. Come by today and have a cup of coffee and let us talk with you about our many products: savings accounts, checking accounts, CDs, and our many loans. You're more than just a number to us, you're family. Come by today, Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County, Member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
Do you have some comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great, come on up. We'd love to hear your comments.
Thank you, first of all, for what you do. Yeah, it's probably one of the most thankless jobs that you have, but thank you for what that's worth. I live in the county, so a lot of times I don't get up, but I'm probably one of the highest-paying taxpayers in the city that's probably in here. And a lot of times I'm not heard because I live in the county.
I know that.
But I won't speak up.
You saved your name, I'm sorry.
I'm Elton Dixon.
The microphone, please.
Tax citizen in Dublin City. And I'm gonna holler on that, I think, from now on.
Ms. Godfrey has asked if you could try to speak into the microphone, that way it can get picked up for her.
Okay, all the taxes I pay, we all have a good system, Ms. Godfrey. So just a few, just a few things that I want to say is that I hope that we're investing into something for the future, for the kids. It's not about us. I've had my heyday. Unfortunately, I didn't get to go to Okoni, but it's about the kids and those that are coming behind me. So whatever we're doing, we need to be doing it for the kids that are coming behind us. It's not about the contractor who's going to be doing it, it's about equity, it's about opportunity. And if Dublin Construction walked out, didn't give a bid, Parrish walked out, didn't give a bid, Dublin Construction is from Dublin, maybe we might need to think about what we're doing. Let's just make sure that we're doing things equitably, maybe from that same point. Were we thinking about lighting in the gym? I don't know how we can go in and just remodel Okoni Gym and get 21st century or the proper lighting right now by throwing up some paint and just doing that. I don't know that we can do that. I've been in the remodeling business in, in the gym that was old. It's hard. So we really need to think, we really gonna have to do some pre-work in there to really, we really gonna have to just, I think we just need to start over and rethink what we're doing to make sure that we're doing for the future. Thank you for what you did.
All right, thank you, Reverend Dixon, I always appreciate your comments. You know, just as to lighting, I do want to be clear that the, the project scope does include new lighting for the, for the gym that would be supported by the electrical system. You know, the work on the electrical system would support new lighting. When I've been in there, I've noticed that lighting is a major issue, and hopefully with the opening up the windows, you would get some of that light shining into that, that building as well. I will note that the, that this process that we used was approved by council in June when we signed the terms and conditions of this with the state. So, and it was also discussed at, at that public hearing at the Okoni Gym. And, and so the, the, one of the major goals that I wanted for the city, coming in as mayor, was full transparency of all these processes. And that's why we have tried to schedule as many public hearings and public meetings and engage the community, in the community, and in meetings like this as much as possible. And also to have the processes that we use, that staff uses to make recommendations on contractors or other items, to make those as transparent and open as possible. So this process, I think, you know, I went back this past weekend and reviewed everything that happened because I needed to satisfy myself as to whether the process was open, fair, and transparent, and that there was an equal opportunity for any contractor to participate in this project. And based on the documents that I reviewed about the, you know, when the, when the grant was written, the, the way the grant was written, when the request for proposal came out, the way that we had public meetings and requests for public inputs at Okoni Gym, we had public meetings in here, and here to approve the terms and conditions of the contract. This process of using the contract manager process was discussed among council and publicly. And the whole point of it, what everybody on this council wants is to get the best product possible for the children in that neighborhood. And if you look at how that process has worked out, and I'm just giving my opinion now, that process said, please come and participate. If you're a contractor, we want you to review this proposal, we want you to bid on it. And there were, there were two proposals that were submitted and reviewed by staff, and I think that we were very fortunate to get one of the top historic renovation contractors in the state to bid on this project. Everybody here wants the best for that gym. We want the best contractor working to create the best product for the children in that neighborhood. And I feel very confident, based on the review of the documents and the participation of the public and the participation of the council over the past six months and even two years on this project. We made this a priority coming out the gate. We said, this is how we want to spend some of the federal dollars that we have allocated. This is how we want to spend city money. This is how we want staff to spend their time to go after these grants, because this neighborhood has been neglected for too long, and it's time to pay it attention. And we made that a priority. And the priority was not just to pay attention to it, not to give it anything second rate, but to give it first rate, first-rate materials, first-rate contractors. We want the very best for the kids in that neighborhood who have been neglected for too long. And that is the reason that we have done all this, and that is the reason that we have gone through this process. And so I, I appreciate so much the fact that all of you are concerned enough to come on a 4:30 in the afternoon, and you came last week on a Thursday, and you came and showed up at the Okoni Gym in June. I, I know the faces out there, I see you, I know that y'all care about this and that it's important to you and your community, and we care about it too. And the goal here is to get the highest-quality gym that we can for the kids in that community. And when we vote on this next week, I hope that everybody understands that that's what every council member is trying to achieve, even if there may be a difference in opinion about how we get there.
Now's the time to get a great deal on the number-one rated tractor brand for durability and owner experience. Professional-grade mowers, durable sidekick utility vehicles, and versatile compact tractors. It's the equipment you need to take care of your land. Right now, bring home select Kubota equipment for zero down, 0% APR for up to 60 months, plus up to $800. Your Kubota dealer is Midstate Tractor and Equipment, 1325 North Jefferson, Dublin. You've been saying you want it, and now's the time to get it. Pool and patio furniture in style with fabrics you want, comfort and durability you deserve. You'll even save on accessories and add your own personal style. Come see the full line of pool and patio furniture at Midstate Pools and Spas today, and bring home a colorful poolside. Now's a great time to save at Midstate Pools and Spas, located on Veterans Boulevard in Dublin. Midstate Pools and Spas, we know pools.
All right, boys, if you want to go to college, you have to clear out another one of these. What if we told you there was a better way to save for your kid's college than pickle jars? Morris Bank's Savings Builder Account and MULA makes saving for your kid's college easier than ever. All you have to do is connect the account to your debit card, where it automatically rounds up your purchases to the nearest dollar. Depositing that spare change into a MULA account, where it will grow into a nice little nest egg for whatever your kids have their sights set on.
Hi, I'm Tom Dominy, Dublin One Nelson Company. We're a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. We are committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business every day. With a staff that collectively offers more than 50 years of expertise, our team knows your industry. We're able to answer your questions and are ready to help you get the parts and equipment you need. At Dublin One Nelson, our goal is long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment: doing things right, one customer at a time. Our showroom is complete with the latest styles and fixtures. Stop by and see us at 507 Airport Road, or give us a call at 478-272-3585 at Dublin One Nelson.
All right, are there any other public comments? Anybody who has not made a comment that would like to? Yes, sir.
Albert Stanley, citizen of Dublin, class of 1963. Okona, Okona High School, I'm saying that we will not history. We did a ceremony that put a plaque up, but the state and federal didn't allow historical. Next thing, I don't think the city council is well-informed on a lot of stuff. This is the grant, have y'all seen it? This is the post package, have you seen it? I sent it in the mail, had to reach over to the manager. So evidently, you haven't really read it. I don't put it like it is. I was a soldier for 24 years. I'm like, okay, also billions of dollars, speaking the truth, including Charles Carr. Okay? I'm gonna ask a question, but you don't have to answer. Do you know the city put in for the grant? Yeah, y'all did. What and why did anybody on City Council ask those questions? They asked, how much awkward money do we have if we needed to add it to that 2-point post, rid of the date, how much do we have? If we got the money, it shouldn't be no problem if we got the awkward money, okay? Do, let me get my glasses, I'm gonna get old. Do the city council vote to match the grant if approved? I'm looking at the city council, yeah, if y'all hear this, you know, maybe go to church on Sunday. If the city don't want to match the grant, what plan do we have for the awkward money that we have on hand now? You might want to explain what I'm talking about on awkward money. I've been up to the planning and budget and that line, I haven't talked to them. Ain't no rush on getting this done. Ain't no rush on getting this done, they want it done right. They asked that same question. When the form went up to get this grant, we're rushing on important stuff. This grant went up, if y'all was a citizen, form with it and said that we will match, that would have helped, but the form didn't go up because the person that said it didn't, a form would have been filled out the same time down. Okay, but still, any city council, did y'all see this package?
Yes, they all have it.
Do they have?
And they have both proposals.
Okay, but evidently, y'all have the question, you can read it. This was the sheet in there, dealing with what needs to be done. Okay. First thing, bathrooms, I ain't hear Mr. Bradshaw say nothing about bathrooms. ADA, very important. I know you set me down, but I could tell you a lot of things off the contract. You need blueprints to be able to come up with your figures later, okay, if you're remodeling or whatever, that's what you need. It's hard to come up with data. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Is there anyone else? Yes, you can come forward, please.
Alfred Wheeler, I live in the last of the drive. Couple of minutes ago, there was a big discussion about the branding. Decisions was made, you know, about the branding. And it took a while for the community to understand that you all had made that decision. And y'all took a hit with that, I mean, a big hit with that. Some of the things that was said about y'all was just wrong and ugly. And I, and to be truthful, I felt sorry for you. But this is my concern. We are here today, yes, y'all did your homework, but it's not what we want. It's not what we asking for. Everybody talking about that community. I live in Ward 4, Mr. Brown. So, okay, so, I go to that gym. My, I have five kids, we go to that gym. The whole city of Dublin goes to that gym. It's part of the regulation. The county goes to their gym. We want fairness. Think about that. Give us an oppo, give the citizens an opportunity. We'd like to see, along with the architect, we want to see an advisory board. An advisory board that's made up of stakeholders, the constituents from all the wards, you know, maybe business owners, to help come up with, so we can tell them what we want. And so that we can be at the table with the architect, so we can tell them what we want. Again, I felt so bad at the disrespect that y'all had to take. I felt so bad. I want you all, the same way y'all listened to those who was against that branding, I want y'all to give us that same due diligence. I appreciate y'all there.
All right. Thank you for those comments, Ms. Wheeler. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment?
I'm Brenda Pauldo. I've worked for the city for approximately 32 years. I just want to read something and this is concerning the Emery Thomas Building. It said, "I anticipate the $450,000 budget will cover the painting of the outside trim, pressure washing, painting the interior, staining the doors, and polishing the hardware, abatement and installation of existing floor, remover of the ceiling, and painting of the exposed ceiling, installation of new acostal lighting, replacement of the windows and opening them up to the full opening size, including removal of the lures on the back with the fans and replacement of that with windows and windows in the two storage rooms, new windows covering, new seating for the auditorium, a roof evaluation, and the restroom renovations." But I was just wondering, do this amount covers the HVAC or the kitchen? Because this is quite a large amount. You know, I was just wondering, was that included in this? And if we're gonna get the same situations with the Okonni Gym with this, then this is not what we want. We would like to have more. And I just want to say, I do commend the council for the job that you do and I'm just asking for the same consideration that you give to others that you could give to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pauldo.
Do you want to feel and look healthier, younger, and full of vitality and energy? Med Spa is your solution for treatments, including skin, waxing, brow and lashes, botox, fillers, body sculpting, and laser treatment, including hair removal, the fastest and least painful anywhere. Come visit us at Med Spa and book your massages by calling Med Spa today at 275-8346. Or visit us at 2400 Bellevue Road, Suite 11 in Dublin.
I'm Glenn Register, Hometown Supply. Come by today and let me show you all the different product lines that we carry. Just about anything that you need, we have it in stock. We do financing, we deliver, just about anything a customer needs for us to do, we do. Come by and let me show you what sets us apart from all the rest. If you can't do business here, you just can't do business.
North, south, east, or west, Friendly Gus is on your way today. Fuel up with Friendly Gus's delicious breakfast, made fresh every day. Your wallet and your belly will thank you. Choose from our 20, 40, and 60-piece chicken finger and wing platters. And don't forget the tater logs. Our food is always fresh and our service is always friendly. Friendly Gus, on your way today. Also shop Cocker Brothers Cash and Carry at 320 South Jefferson in Dublin for additional items like paper products, chicken wings, bulk drinks, spices, sauces, and more.
Hi, I'm Mark Tarpley, Cuddling Supply and Engine Services. Bad Boy Tractors. We're built on the legacy of Bad Boy brand, introducing a brand new line of small, medium-sized tractors that maintain our history of combining power, performance, and build quality while delivering highest value in their class. With a tractor size to fit any form of property from landscapers to ranchers, Bad Boy tractors are positioned to fit workforces in the field, coupled with our line of Bad Boy implements, coders, you are all set to make your workday feel less of a chore. Come visit us at Cuddling Engines Supply, 910 East Jackson Street in Dublin, or 826 South Harris Street in San Antonio.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Yes, please come forward.
I'm Curtis Smith. I actually work at the gym, I live out in the horseshoe place and I was reluctant to get in there. My issue is just the size. I'm pretty sure this renovation will make it a very pretty place to come in and do all those things, but I just don't see where we're gonna get needed space with the renovation. When I left there, I had some kids on the stage doing homework and I had a Dublin High Dance Team in the back with a room full of chairs and tables. I don't know, and then in addition, she did mention the weight room, which is, it is important to us to get that thing back up and running like we had it before, before COVID and all that. But my whole concern is the space. It just seems to me we need additional space. And we do, and I appreciate the comment, you know, about the kids over there, but from my concern, it's not just about our community, it's about Dublin. That anybody want to come down and be part of the facility and have different things in the facility is what I was looking for. And I don't know that just renovating, then you're so close when you're talking that kind of money, I don't know how far away you are from being able to add space and redo the gym, you know? Thank you, that's my comment.
All right. Thanks for that. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Anyone else here who would like to make a public comment? All right, have we know it? Okay.
Eugene Smith, how y'all doing today? I must commend y'all on a well job. Been in Dublin basically all my life, invested a lot into Dublin. You council group, y'all done a magnificent job bringing things to the community. But when you look at Tara, I want to commend you, I really do. But when you look at Tussle, Tussle Raceway in 1920, it kind of gave our communities a shocker to where now, when you look at African-American communities, we don't have businesses, and it's across the whole United States, we don't have business, we have fear, we just have fear. Now, we had six people to build, to come to that bid meeting, you had two to respond. Did y'all get any feedback on why those other guys didn't respond?
They had too much other work.
They had too much other work? Okay, when we look at the Okonni, I mean, the Emery Thomas renovation project, you got the scope of work, you got taken out a ceiling. When you remove, you got your air conditioning system in that facility. Now, when you take that ceiling out, that's going to increase the number of merit that you need for airspace. And air conditioning is not included in that scope of work at Emery Thomas. And the community has been, say it again?
It is.
You say that the AC is included in?
It's been replaced, yes.
Within the scope of work that's already done?
In the original scope.
The original scope of work, yeah?
What was not in the original scope of work was the kitchen area. And we're trying to make it where the, I forgot about that minute, we're trying to make it where the windows are back to their historic look, the way the building was originally looked. And so, that cost is a lot more than we had anticipated. So, Tara is actually looking, we're looking at a grant now that we can apply for to help with that, so we don't have to come out of pocket for that money.
Okay.
But, I mean, the projects are going now, they're painting down there now.
Okay. So, Blake, I got two more minutes because Josh took my time.
He found the loophole.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. You know, Curtis, now, we met with Mr. Bradshaw down at the Okonni Gym eight months ago, 10 months ago, in reference to doing an additional room or two for the capacity so that the capacity can be enlarged. We need that additional space at that center. When you, just like summer pines, when you make these things beautiful, people will come. And what we got to do in our community, council cannot do it all, we got to invest as well. What we have to do is create some. You know, our city has a lot of shootings, we have a lot of chaos because we are not really investing back into our communities for our kids. So, we are not here debating and trying to bash y'all because we appreciate everything y'all doing for us. But we want transparency, we want equality, you know, when we pledge allegiance to the flag, it say justice for all. And that's what we asking for. Just make the plan feel a little closer, a little closer. That's all we want. We, y'all done an awesome job. Y'all the best council I've seen in Dublin. And that's funny too. But we need, we need more. And on tomorrow, on tomorrow, we're meeting at the chamber, they're doing some renovation at Fairview Hospital. And they're asking for black minority business owners of construction to come to the chamber and do a workup on that project. They asking specifically. And we are asking the same thing for the Okonni Gym. We just want a piece of the pie. We want to know what's going on. Thank you. Thank you, Blake.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment this evening?
Hi, I'm Brandy and I would like to invite you to experience our newly renovated mammography suite at the Fairview Park Hospital Breast Center. Our breast center has its own dedicated entrance with a relaxing boutique-like waiting area. You can make your appointment online anytime at fairviewparkhospital.com or by calling Most appointments take 30 minutes or less and we will have your results back to your doctor within 24 hours.
That's Four Seasons.
First Lawrence Bank invites you to experience banking at its best. Whether you have personal or business needs, we're a full-service bank, big enough to handle all of your banking needs and small enough to provide you with that personal touch you've grown to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. Looking forward to your future. That's First Lawrence Bank in Dublin and Dexter, Member FDIC.
Allen's Heating and Cooling is your licensed demand equipment dealer. Trust Allen's Heating and Cooling to install and service your heating and air conditioning unit. Allen services all brands and with the purchase of a new unit, Amana offers a lifetime compressor warranty. Sean Clark or any of his friendly staff can help you today at Allen's Heating and Cooling. You're Amana dealer, Amana, last and last and last.
Any other public comments? All right, if there are no other comments, we will close the public hearing. And this time, we'll allow any council members who wish to make comments. Mr. Mascara, any comments this evening?
Chris and I walked around that area, I've been there, my kids have played ball in that gym. For my oldest son who is a basketball player, that gym is where basketball is supposed to be. Okay? So, when this thing came up and my kid being in the school system at the time, like, I felt like we were doing everything as a council to listen to the people there. We took it on our first planning session, we went through this whole process of trying to figure out how we could serve the people in this room the best, the people that are representing that part of the community. And I think that the ultimate goal, Tara said it today, and I will back up a little bit. When I put my business in downtown, everybody told me I was crazy. Everybody said it was a bad move. And I watched Tara Bradshaw and her team and Joshua when he was on the DVA, single-handedly followed private investment into making that place something to look at. I know that Tara's plan and her ability to help us get through this process is the right choice. And you all elected us to help our community get better and you trusted us and you cast your vote for us. Our staff made a decision based on the contractors that would provide the best job for this project. I think that hearing you all speak and come here and talk and listening to Joshua, there is an opportunity for you to still interface with those contractors. Am I wrong there, Tara? On the Okonni Gym?
Oh, absolutely. There's a whole nother design process that will start once the contract is awarded and we have plans to have an advisory committee, like we talked about in possession in June, that's the next steps, which is not there yet. We got to start with getting the CM in place first.
So, that's my point here. I think that there's a lot of, I think that in the community, there's, it was said before that we need to be transparent and we are being transparent and that's exactly why we're here. But now you have to allow us to represent you and do what's right for y'all and that community. And we're not even through the process, there's still an opportunity. There's still an opportunity for the contractor that gets awarded the project to listen to you. They, they still have an opportunity to give you what you want. Tara clearly said that we are going to strip the building to its, its walls and replace everything. There's an opportunity for you to speak again. But we have to choose the best person that can hear that and turn that into something tangible. You know? We want the best for, for there, and, and it's, my voice been blowing up. I just, you can, you can, you can be that, I want people sitting up here. It, it bugs me, I love the place. My, my kid, my kid loves that gym. I've told you that how many times? That is, that is basketball to him. So, not only do the people that live on the South Side feel some draw to it, I think everybody up here does. He put bill plate there. So, we're not looking to hurt the community, but you chose us as your council to make good business decisions for you. And now we've got to do that. And, and I just ask that you give us some opportunity to do that for y'all, and we're here. We are here to do what is right for this entire community. That's all I can say. Sorry to be along with it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mascara. Mr. Smith?
He can't talk.
First off, I just want to thank everyone for coming and showing up. I mean, it takes a lot for people to just play around, listen to people, but for the community that's a show, I just want to applaud you guys, and also applaud council as well for making this meeting happen. But, uh, from my standpoint, from what I heard from citizens, it is pretty much, uh, the process and the way that we did this, uh, to me, it's kind of like a baffle. I don't understand. But we're, we're awarding a contract before we even see what's going on, before we even see the design. If it was the other way around, and we saw a design and then award a contract, I don't think it would be a problem. I don't think it would be too much pushback from the community, because the community had to see what they, what they're getting beforehand, versus going ahead and award the contract, then trying to go in and say, hey, you want this, want that. Why not just come up with a design beforehand? I think that's the main thing the citizens have been saying, and that's what the citizens want. But then I thank everybody for coming. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Griggs, any comments?
Uh, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming and all the, all the comments that were made. I'm sure they're all going to be taken into consideration and, uh, do the best things we can with them, and, um, y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Normally, we start hearing and come back in, so, um, Mr. Brown?
I'm gonna be short and sweet, and if y'all can hear, I've been coughing up here a little bit. Uh, but I just want to thank everybody for being here. Appreciate your input, and all listening to Tara, and, uh, thank y'all for being here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Godfrey, um, if you can, uh, if you'd like to make any comments, you can unmute, and, um, I think that I can put the microphone up to it, and any of your comments can be heard if you'd like to do that.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out. I am knee-deep in work right now, loading a van for a trip to Miramar, Florida for this Omega show. But I thank everybody, and I apologize to Benny Jones that he could not be there, but, um, there was no disrespect, I don't think on, I know on my part there wasn't, and I hate he couldn't be there to represent his work, but...
Oh, I think it just cut out. So, thank you, Ms. Godfrey, for those comments. Uh, Councilman Colby?
Um, I'm just so thankful for the processes that we have in place that allow each of us to have a say. Um, that's why we're here, that's why, um, we have tried, uh, there's tests.
Sorry, okay.
Go ahead.
See though. Tara, you there?
All right, uh, Councilman Godfrey, would you like?
Wrong went out, I apologize.
Would you like to, um, to continue to comment? We've, you've got the floor here.
Oh, no, I just want to thank everybody for coming out, and I, um, wanted to say that I'm sorry that Benny Jones couldn't be there, but I don't think we were being disrespectful as a council by going ahead with this meeting. Um, I hate he wasn't there, but I'm sure that he will, um, be heard, and we will listen to him as well, um, maybe next week. But I thank y'all for coming out, and y'all have a wonderful evening. And that's it. Goodbye.
All right, thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Uh, Councilman Colby, and I hope you have a safe trip. Uh, Councilman Colby?
Thank you.
Um, again, just wanted to thank you for participating. Thank you. This is your community, this is our community, and each of us have a voice in it. Um, and this is what I've heard. This is what I've heard through the process, this is, um, what I heard before I ran, and this is what I heard during my run, was that we wanted development to happen across our community as a whole. We didn't want it to happen just in pockets or just downtown, we wanted it to happen throughout our whole, the whole community. And as, um, Rich noted, our very, very first, um, planning session, that was exactly what we came to the table to do, was to apply these funds that we had been, um, given with ARCA to different, um, areas of the community who, which have not seen investment, uh, since the 60s and 70s. That's wrong, to not have continued investment in all areas of our, of our community, and that's exactly what we set out to do. You've also asked for transparency, you've also asked for efficiency, and you've also asked for us to be fiscally responsible. And I take each one of those responsibilities incredibly serious, um, and I thank you for your input tonight. Thank you.
All right, I want to thank everyone for coming this evening, and I've made my comments in the middle of the meeting, but I, I do, to me, if I can just say what I'm hearing is that, um, there is some concern that, about what happened in the process. But I think that, I hope that the information that you've received tonight regarding why the process was constructed the way it was, for the purposes of reducing, uh, the costs, the architectural fees, and for allowing the project to get started with those major mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems that often require very long lead times, I, I hope that the information that you've received about the project scope and how that project scope was detailed, as to the type of remodeling that was being done, but still called for a role for the community in the details of, of, like, the, the gym floor, the art installation, and the usage of the rooms, that that is still open, and that we intend to set up an advisory committee for that. You know, this construction management process is not used too often by cities. Normally, in a lot of situations, you'll, you will, you will pay an architect 7% to 10% of the project cost to do an elaborate, full bid package. And the cost of that bid package in this situation was going to be probably a couple hundred thousand dollars or more, and it takes time. You know, we're looking at several months of time to do that. And a lot of times, the bidding that you do, once you do that kind of package, the contractors have to protect themselves against inflation and material cost escalation, uh, and then they want to build in their profits to it, so a lot of times on those bids, you get higher costs. Tara made the decision, and council supported it after open, uh, open meetings and community input, that the construction management process was a way that we could speed the project up, deliver the project to the community in a quicker way at lower cost, without having to incur all those architectural fees. At the same time, we want to continue to engage in the community about the details of how the gym gets finished out. So, and I want everyone to know that we're fully committed to that, to continuing to listen to the community. So, I hope that the information that you received tonight was helpful. I always say, you know, more facts equals better decisions, and we want to give you all the facts that you asked for. Uh, I will, on Facebook this evening, provide links to every document related to this project. So, anybody in this community who wants to go in and look at what the proposals were, what the RFP was, what the grant was, what the public notice was provided, all of that is, is already public information, but I want to make it accessible to you, uh, through social media, so that you'll, maybe if you use that as a way to, to reach more people, we can do that. We want to be fully open and transparent, and we want to continue to receive your input. So, thank you for coming this evening, and I hope to see everyone, uh, next Thursday at our regular City Council meeting. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Hi, this is Meg Greer-Evans with Middle Georgia Estate Planning. It's Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and I want to make sure you know that you need to update your estate planning documents, whether that's an advance directive for healthcare or a financial power of attorney. We need those documents in place to make sure that you're taken care of during your lifetime. It's also a good idea to update your will or trust. If you need help with any of those, give us a call at 478-272-2885.
Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, green and growing, invested in the communities we serve. For consumer loans, commercial loans, mortgage loans, contact us at 272-7775, or log on to cbs-lc.com. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, located on Hillcrest Parkway and downtown in the Henry Building. Member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
I'm Marcus Clements. I worked with MetLife for many years. After retiring from MetLife, Darren and I began to talk about forming an insurance agency. So, Darren and I, in 1999, formed Clements and King Insurance. Probably worked harder after retiring than, than before.
Marcus and I decided to come together, and, uh, it has been great. Health insurance is a big area. There's a lot of facets to it. We try to be the place that you can start out young and grow old into the senior insurance that you need, and we cover, uh, every area of health insurance than life insurance.
Many are influenced by what they see on TV or what they see online. We provide an alternative to that. We have an office, and we try to navigate, and help our clients navigate the confusing market of Medicare-related products.
What I would like for our clients to know, or our potential clients to know, that when you meet with us, we don't charge a fee for our service. And if you have a plan in place, and if it's better for you, we'll tell you that that's the plan you need to stay with. We're not going to push you towards something we have.
I do the Medicare-related insurance. I tell my clients that I've been 65 for, for 11 years. People normally get Medicare when they're 65, and what we do is provide insurance to supplement their base Medicare.
So, I specialize in individual health insurance, or, or private policies, which is for people who do not have access to health insurance through their job or where they work. And I also specialize in group insurance for small businesses. Majority of small businesses are family businesses, and so we're a family business, and we understand the struggles that they have and the opportunities that they, they have. So, we really enjoy working with them from one family to another.
55 years ago, when I started in the insurance business, never would I imagine that one day I'd be working with my son-in-law, and I'd have the granddaughter coming in.
When I first started, I would sit in on several of the appointments with my granddad, and I witnessed many clients come in, and they were just overwhelmed with the idea of senior insurance. And I have seen the way that my granddad, being so knowledgeable about it, and being so personal, and caring so much about the clients, he's able to just turn that around, and they leave the office just with this weight off their shoulders. I have learned, not just about insurance, but how to treat the people in our community, and how to make sure that they know that we're there for them from the beginning of the sale until just the rest of our time with them as our client.
And so Allison is now with us, we're very excited about that. She, uh, is primarily focused on Medicare with Marcus, but she does a lot of life insurance.
So, I work with clients of all ages. I have people my age who are just getting married and having kids, and they want to get a policy on them, or a whole life policy on their toddler to have, um, as they age. But I also see clients that are older, that are maybe looking for a final expense policy. I get to see clients at many different seasons of their lives.
I love to wake up in the morning and help people, and that's what we do. We don't just sell insurance, we help people.
The community has been very good to us, and Darren and I try our best to give back to the community.
We try our best to give back, because we have been very blessed. The people of Lawrence County and the City of Dublin have received us well, and we're very grateful for that.
I just love Dublin, this has always been home for me. My dad and my granddad do what they love, and it, it's a blessing to join them in it.
We live here, we, we worship here, and we see our clients at the grocery store, or at church, or in the, in the community, or downtown. We're here, we're local, and we service what we sell all year long. We'll continue to do that without charge, and, uh, just a big thank you to be able to live and work in this community.